Welcome parents. I am here today along with Nancy Toole, and Terry McCarthy, and Jim Hamilton. We're part of Danbury's Citywide PTO, and we're sponsoring this event, thank you very much. You're here probably because you got word that something isn't right. Something's not right. It could have been this flyer that you received somewhere along the line, but we've got some issues that affect all of our children, our teachers, all of us in this room. So we wanted to get the word out. When the Citywide PTO heard some of this information, we were astonished, and we need to do something about it. And we have someone who's going to take us through this and help you all understand what we saw and what we heard. I'd like to introduce Katie Roy. She's the director and founder of Connecticut School Finance Project. Katie is the -- she launched this project in 2015. She previously served as the Chief Operating Officer at the Connecticut Council for Education Reform and has more than 10 years' experience in law and policy. Katie attended the University of Connecticut School of Law, where she earned a law degree and certificate in tax studies. She is a Connecticut resident, and she lives with her family in New Haven. So please join me in welcoming Katie Roy.
Hi, everybody. Thanks so much for coming out tonight. So unfortunately, I have to be able to see my laptop screen to give this presentation, so I am going to have to stand on the stage, which I hate doing, but I'll be able to give you much more accurate data if I can see what I'm doing. So before I talk about school finance in Danbury, I just want to begin by telling you a little bit about the Connecticut School Finance Project. So the reason that I started this project about nine months ago is that I believe that there is a fundamental problem with the way that Connecticut funds its public schools. And I started the Connecticut School Finance Project in order to be able to fix that. So one of our key goals is to be able to bring together stakeholders like all of you who are concerned about how our public schools are funded in order to effect change. However, we're not a membership-based organization, so instead of having members, we work with groups like PTOs and PTAs to reach out to education stakeholders. Our project has three very clear, simple-to-articulate-but-hard-to-do goals. The first is to build knowledge about how the current school finance system works. So we do that through presentations like this. I have done more -- I've talked to more than 700 people in forums like this in the last nine months. The second goal is to bring together stakeholders who are impacted by how schools are funded. I think that includes everyone in this room. And thirdly, to identify solutions to Connecticut's school funding challenges that are fair to students in schools and work for taxpayers. One thing I do want to point out that came up after my last presentation. So we are a completely separate organization from Danbury Public Schools. Danbury Public Schools doesn't pay us to be here. We are 100% funded by nonprofit foundations through unrestricted general operating grants, so everything that we're saying, we're saying independently and separate from the school district. So the purpose of tonight's presentation is four-fold. So this presentation is designed to be informative and educational, and our goal is to provide you with an accurate and nonpartisan view of how Connecticut funds its public schools and how that impacts Danbury. So this presentation will cover Connecticut's school finance system, paying attention to state and local funding. And while we'll focus on how the state distributes education dollars and how that impacts Danbury, we're not going to be talking about how Danbury chooses to distribute funding among its public schools. That's a locally-controlled decision that the Common Council and the Board of Education and the Superintendent's Office make here, and I think they're going to be talking a little bit about next year's district budget at the end of this meeting. So in this presentation, we are going to see a lot of numbers and some scatter plots, and I think in all of that, we can sometimes get a little bit lost about what school finance is actually about, although maybe less so when I talk to parents rather than when I talk to policymakers. But in my mind, school finance is fundamentally about three things. So it's about kids, it's about the students who attend all of the public schools in our state, it's about our schools themselves, so we think that strong schools are really a critical part of strong communities, and finally, it's about communities. So we have 169 cities and towns in Connecticut, and it is really important that we have a strong school funding system so that we are able to have a strong cities and towns. So I'd like to begin with a little example. This is an illustrative child named Alex. So obviously, this is not a real child who attends Danbury Public Schools. He's just a top child that we use as an example. The other thing to know is that in Connecticut, we are only able to calculate how much is spent on a per pupil basis at the district level. So obviously, school districts receive funding, they then distribute that funding to schools, and they don't actually spend an equal amount of money on every child. They actually spend different amounts of money according to the students' learning needs. But when we're going to talk about this, we're going to talk about what the districts receive on a per pupil basis. So Alex, our illustrative child, obviously lives in Danbury. He is a third grader here, and when he grows up, he wants to become a doctor. So the question we're going to look at is how much funding does Alex's district receive to educate him? And in Connecticut, the answer to that question is it really depends on where Alex lives. So it doesn't depend on Alex and Alex's learning needs. Instead, it depends on the city or town that Alex lives in. So we're going to take a look at three cities and towns and compare them. So we're obviously going to look at Danbury, and we're going to compare Danbury to two districts that are considered similar to Danbury in many ways: Stanford Public Schools and Norwalk Public Schools. So if Alex goes to school here in Danbury, Danbury Public Schools is going to receive $12,683 to educate him. Of that, the state of Connecticut's share is going to be about $3,000. The city of Danbury, so that is taxes that are raised from all of you and all of the property in Danbury, is going to contribute almost $9,000 to Alex's education. And then the city is going to receive about $622 from other sources. That would be federal grants or any other type of revenue that might come into the school system. So what happens if Alex's family decides that they're going to move to Norwalk? So if they move to Norwalk, Norwalk is going to receive $16,531 to educate Alex. About $2,000 of that is going to come from the state of Connecticut. Norwalk's taxpayers are going to contribute about $14,000, and Norwalk is going to receive about $695 in other revenue. Again, that's including things like federal. Finally, if Alex's family decides to move to Stanford, Stanford is going to receive about $17,000 to educate Alex. The state contribution is going to be about $1,765. Stanford's taxpayers are going to contribute about $14,800, and finally, there'll be about $566 in other contributions. So as we can see, the amount that Alex's school district is going to receive to educate him depends on the school district. And when we look here, we see that there is a very significant range in the amounts of money. So there is almost a $5,000 range between what Stanford is going to receive and what Danbury is going to receive in order to educate Alex. And the other thing that's going to vary significantly is the amount of money that Alex's family is going to pay: property taxes. So to make this a little bit more realistic, we've calculated the property taxes on a house valued at $200,000. And in Danbury, Alex's family is going to pay $3,956 annually in property taxes on that house. In Norwalk, that's going to be about $3,500, and in Stanford, about $3,800. So really, the purpose of this presentation is to talk about why, right? Why is it that Stanford and Norwalk receive so much more funding for their public schools than Danbury does, and how does the state's school finance system contribute to that issue? So I want to begin just with a couple of overview points that I want to make. The first is just to answer the question, why is school finance a state-level issue? Why isn't this something that we deal with through the federal government? And the main answer to that is that a right to a free public education is not something that is considered a right under the United States Constitution. Instead, it is a right that has been found individually in each of the 50 states' contributions. And there was a Supreme Court case in the 1970s called Rodriguez that's pretty well-known in school finance, so it was anyhow. And basically, it said that because education is not a constitutional right under the federal constitution, public schools fall under the authority of state government and are primarily funded through state and local tax dollars. And as a result, they concluded that a school finance system that results in property wealthy communities having more funding for their public schools than poorer communities is not a system that's considered unconstitutional. As a result, if you want to pursue a remedy on school finance through the courts, you have to do that through state courts. Then if it does currently have pending school finance litigation, that's the CJEFF case that some of you may have been following in the media, and Danbury, both as a city and a school district, is part of that litigation. Dr. Sal testified as part of the case. So how much does Connecticut spend on public education in total? So every year, Connecticut spends about $10.1 billion on public education in the state. About 57% of that comes from local sources, so that's local property taxes. Another 38% comes from the state government, and Connecticut receives a very tiny amount of federal funding for education, less than 5% of the total education budget for the state of Connecticut, so it really doesn't play a substantial role. Some of you who are somewhat familiar with the state budget may look at this and say, "This seems like a lot of money compared to what I know." There are a couple of things that the federal government includes in these calculations that we don't always think of as public education costs. One of them is the cost of school construction. So obviously, we have schools in our state, and our cities and towns as well as the state have taken on long-term debt obligations to pay for those schools, and the payments on those are calculated in this. The other thing that we don't always think of is teacher pensions. So in Connecticut, teacher pensions are 100% paid by the state. That's actually somewhat unusual, and most other states, that's a responsibility that's shared by the state and municipalities, but the annual obligations for teacher pensions are also included in this. So as a result, this presentation is really going to focus on state and local funding, which is 95% of the money that is spent every year on public schools in Connecticut. The next thing that we're going to take a look at is why should we fund students based on their learning needs? So when I went through the example about Alex, one of the things that I talked about is it doesn't matter what Alex's individual needs are as Alex. The amount of money he gets depends on where he lives, right? That's what the school district gets to educate him. And rather than doing that, a system we might consider is one that funds students based on their learning needs. And one of the questions that comes up is, why do we want to fund students based on learning needs? Why don't we just fund them all equally? So equally, or equality, which you see on the -- I always bet that this one's made here -- on the right-hand side, is about sameness, right? So that's everybody gets the same thing. In order to do that, you take the total amount of money that we have for public schools, you divide it by the number of children who go to school in Connecticut, and you would give every child that amount of money. The issue is that children don't come to school with the same set of needs, right? So every child is unique, they have a unique set of learning needs, and as a result, they all need different amounts of resources in order to achieve at high levels. So on the other hand, when we talk about equity, which you'll see on the other side, equity is about access to the same opportunities. So in order to ensure that every child has the same access to opportunities, we need to make sure that we are matching the needs of that child, and that means using a different amount of resources. So people often think about, okay, so what are learning needs? So there are different types of learning needs that children come to school with. We generally talk about three types of learning needs. So we talk about students who come from low-income families, we talk about English-language learners, and we talk about students with disabilities. So this chart shows some of the potential challenges that those students might come to school with, and some of the potential supports or resources that they might need in order to help them have an equitable educational opportunity. The next issue I want to address is one that tends to come up a lot, and it's the question of, does money matter, right? So a lot of times, I do these presentations, at the end of the presentation, somebody raises their hand and says, "You've just talked about money so much, does money actually matter?" And I think we can all agree that if it costs more than $0 to run the school system, obviously, to some extent, money matters. And there has been some shifting scholarly debate on this that I like to point out, because a lot of people are familiar with the older studies but not the newer ones. So back in 1966, there was a very famous report called the Coleman Report. In that report, they found that there was no clear relationship between school funding and student outcomes. And that was research that was sort of the top of the scholarly research on this issue for several decades, but the scholarly debate on this has shifted quite a bit in recent years. So recent studies have actually found that there is a connection between how much school district spends and the outcome of students, and we've listed some of those studies here. But I think it's important for people to realize that equitable funding is an important factor in an equitable education system. So next, I want to talk a little bit about the state and Danbury. One other thing I want to note is, because we're short on time, we were asked that rather than answering questions at the end of this presentation, that we have people write them down on note cards. So at the end of the presentation, Michael is going to pass out some index cards to you. If you have questions, write them down on there, and you will get a personalized email response from me with the answers. So if you have a great question, maybe just take a note of the paper you have handy. So talking a little bit about the state and Danbury. So over the last 10 years, the number of students enrolled in Connecticut's public schools have declined. So we've seen about a 6% decline in enrollment since 2005, but that decline in enrollment has not been uniform across the state, and we will see in a minute that the picture in Danbury has looked very different. So Danbury is now the seventh-largest school district in the state. At the most recent year of data available, Danbury serves about 11,000 children. I think they may actually even be a little bit over that number by now. And over the next 10 years, Danbury's public school enrollment -- their public school enrollment has consistently increased over the last 10 years, and based on projections, Danbury's school-age population is projected to continue to increase over the next 10 years. So this looks very different than when we look at the rest of the state. In the rest of the state, we generally see an expectation that student enrollment is going to decline by about 12% across the state. Danbury is one of the outlier communities where we are expecting to see continued growth in enrollment. The other thing that's happening in Danbury is that student need is also increasing. So this is something that has happened statewide over the last 10 years, but it has been particularly sharp in Danbury. So here, we are looking at the percentage of children in Danbury who live below the federal poverty line. That is a little over $20,000 a year for a family of four. And what we can see is that the percentage of children in Danbury who are living in poverty has doubled over the last 10 years. So 10 years ago, it was about 8% of kids, and now it's about 16% of kids. That's quite a significant increase. And then the other number that we look at very frequently with low-income students is the percentage of children who are eligible for free and reduced-price lunch, which is a proxy for low-income students. And what we can see is, again, that the percentage of kids who are eligible for free and reduced-price lunch in Danbury has increased by more than 25% over the last 10 years. Again, that's a very significant increase. Furthermore, Danbury serves more ELL students than similar districts. So we're looking at some comparison districts here, which we're going to see throughout this presentation. We have Danbury, East Hartford, Meriden, Waterbury, Norwalk, and Stanford. And what we see is that 22% of the students who attend public school in Danbury are English-language learners. Danbury has the second-highest percentage of English-language learners in the state. The only district with more is Wyndham. The other thing that we see is despite the fact that we're seeing considerable growth in student needs, right? We're seeing a lot more low-income students in Danbury, we're seeing an increase in the percentage of students who are English-language learners. We see that Danbury has less funding available on a per-student basis than many other districts and the state average. So again, here, we are comparing Danbury to some similar and nearby districts. We have Danbury, again, Danbury, East Hartford, Meriden, Waterbury, the state average, Norwalk, and Stanford. What you see down below is the student need statistics for each district. So the top line there says, "For full or free and reduced-price lunch," that's the percentage of children who are considered to be low-income. The next line is "ELL," that's the percentage of children who are English-language learners. And finally, the bottom line is the percentage of children who are diagnosed as students with disabilities. So when we put Danbury into the context of the whole state, Danbury's per-pupil spending is now the fourth-lowest in all of Connecticut. There are only three districts that spend less money on a per-pupil basis than Danbury Public Schools. Danbury actually dropped this year. They were seventh last year, and now they've dropped down to fourth. So they're getting quite close to the bottom, and for the level of need in Danbury, it's quite a low per-pupil expenditure. So let's talk a little bit about how Danbury Public Schools are funded. So here, we're looking statewide, and we see that in Connecticut, the state and local communities share responsibility for funding local public school districts. So again, we see that about 60% of the funding is coming from local taxpayers, and about 40% of the funding is coming from the state. And we see that there are considerable variations in funding between cities and towns. So again, what we've done here is we've compared Danbury to those similar towns, and what we see is that about 70% of the money on a per-pupil basis in Danbury is coming from Danbury taxpayers. About 25% is coming from the state, 4% from the federal government, and then 1% from other sources. So as you can see, it's the lines in the blue that are showing the amount that is coming from local property taxes, and as you can see, about twice as much is coming from local property taxes in Danbury as in East Hartford, Meriden, and Waterbury. So let's take a little bit of a look at state funding. So Danbury receives $3,158 in education funding from the state. Again, we've gone and we've compared that to those similar communities and the state average, and we see that Danbury receives significantly less funding on a per-pupil basis than many of the similar communities. It's about 25% of the total funding per pupil. We also see that although Norwalk and Stanford -- and we'll talk about this a little bit more as this presentation goes on -- are significantly wealthier communities than Danbury is, that Danbury only receives a little bit more state funding. So we can see that on this graph, Danbury's state funding is much more similar to Norwalk and Stanford than it is to East Hartford, Meriden, and Waterbury. So basically, what we see here is that Danbury receives relatively low state funding based on the needs of its students and the town's property wealth, and this is happening because the school finance system isn't funding communities equitably. So why does this happen, right? So the state has this pot of money that they need to divide up among school districts. How does the state determine how much money each school district should get? So Connecticut actually uses 11 different funding formulas to distribute money to public schools. Basically, in Connecticut, each type of school has its own funding formula. That's part of the Connecticut general statutes. There are actually, for magnet schools, there are five different funding formulas for magnet schools. But the formula that we're going to focus on is the education cost-sharing formula. That is the formula that is supposed to be used to distribute about $2 billion in education aid to local public school districts every year. So basically, what the education cost-sharing formula is supposed to determine is how much money the state is supposed to give each city and town to fund its public schools versus how much each city and town needs to contribute to fund its local education system. And I'd like to talk a little bit about why Connecticut has the education cost-sharing formula. So Connecticut began providing equalization aid to cities and towns in Connecticut after a 1977 Connecticut Supreme Court case called Horton versus Meskell, which some of you may be familiar with. So basically, in this case, the court ruled that an education funding system that allows property wealthy towns to spend more on education with less effort, effort could be thought of as the mill rate, is a system that impedes children's Connecticut constitutional right to an equal education. So as a result of this, the Connecticut Legislature established a formula to give money to local public school districts that took property wealth into consideration. So in 1988, Connecticut established the education cost-sharing formula. So this is a formula that we've been using for about 30 years now, although since 1988, it has been revised and changed numerous times. And what the education cost-sharing grant is supposed to do is it's supposed to make up the difference between what a community can afford to pay to fund its public schools and what it actually costs to run the school system. And so how do we try to figure this out? So the education cost-sharing formula has three variables, and basically, these three variables are supposed to determine how much a community needs to raise from property taxes to pay education costs versus how much the state needs to contribute to offset these costs. So there are three variables. So the first is the foundation amount. So the foundation amount is the average estimated cost of educating a student, which sounds like a very official figure, but in fact, the foundation amount is not actually really based on anything. What they did is, the last time they revised the formula, they took like the 70th percentile of spending and said that's going to be the foundation amount. So the current foundation amount is $11,525. The second part of the formula is a need-student calculation. So it's this part of the formula that is supposed to take into account the number of students within a town that typically cost more to educate because of their additional learning needs. So at the beginning of the presentation, we talked about students who are low-income, students who are English-language learners, and students with disabilities. So one of the issues with the current formula is that we only take into account students who are eligible for free and reduced-price lunch as need students. So that means that school districts don't get any additional funding for English-language learners, and they don't get any additional funding for students with disabilities. Other than on the students with disabilities, there is a grant called the excess cost grant that is a high-risk tool that's meant to help offset the cost of meeting the needs of students who have extraordinary learning needs, but only about 0.8% of the total public school children in the state are covered by the excess cost grant. It's a very small part of the student population. And then finally, the base aid ratio. So it's the base aid ratio that is supposed to determine each community's ability to financially support education. And the base aid ratio currently has two components. It currently uses something called the equalized net grand list per capita. So that's the amount of taxable property per person that each city or town has, and in the current iteration of the formula, that's weighted at about 90%, not at about, it is weighted at 90%. And then the other half of the formula is median household income, so that's obviously the median income of all the households in the city or town, and that counts for just 10%. So what we see in the base aid ratio is that it puts a lot of weight on property wealth and very little weight on how much money people actually have available in their pocket in order to pay their taxes. So the way the ECS formula is supposed to work is pretty simple. Basically, you're supposed to multiply the foundation amount times the number of need students times the base aid ratio, and what you will get is the town's entitlement to the education cost-sharing grant, which sounds very simple, and it would be if we were actually doing this. But the problem with the ECS formula is that there were some issues with it. So we're going to talk about the top three problems with the ECS formula. So the first is that the ECS formula doesn't provide funding for the learning needs of all students. So as we discussed, the ECS formula only provides extra funding for students who are low-income as measured by eligibility for free and reduced-price lunch. However, many other students have special learning needs, most specifically English-language learners and students with disabilities, and the formula doesn't provide any additional funding for those students. The second, and this is probably the biggest problem, Connecticut stopped using the education cost-sharing formula altogether in the 2013-2014 school year. So we are no longer using a funding formula to distribute money to local public school districts. I think that's a very important fact for everyone to take away from the presentation. So why did this happen? So there are a few reasons for this. So the state is not able to fully fund the education cost-sharing formula. When you run the formula and figure out what each town's entitlement to the ECS grant is, we see that it would cost about another $625 million to fully fund the formula. As anyone who's been following the media lately knows, the state does not have $625 million right now, or possibly in the near future, which meant that they had a phase-in plan for the formula, but they weren't able to meet the phase-in plan because they didn't have any additional resources. But rather than modifying the formula or adopting a new one, what they decided to do was abandon the formula entirely and begin to make town-by-town block grants to help districts fund their local public schools. So what this really means is that the amount of money that a school district gets now is primarily based on the amount of money that they received last year. So it doesn't take into account changes in enrollment, changes in student need, or changes in community wealth. And as we saw in Danbury, we're seeing enrollment go up, we're seeing student need increase, and we'll talk a little bit about community wealth going down. So finally, the biggest, the third-biggest issue is that the result isn't equitable. So what we see happening is that some wealthy communities are getting more funding than they're technically entitled to under the education cost-sharing formula, while most middle- and lower-income communities get less than they should. So we see Greenwich getting about $1.3 million more than they're technically entitled to, which is about 63% more. And we see that Danbury is getting about $30 million less than they're entitled to, or about half as much as they should get under the ECS grant. We also see that communities with similar needs get very different amounts of money. So when we look at the six highest-need communities in the state, we would see that there's a $4,000 per pupil gap between New Britain and Hartford, which are communities that are very similar. And also, it doesn't apply to all kids in all schools. So we additionally have the Connecticut Technical High School system, we have magnet schools, we have BoEAD programs. This system does not apply to any of those schools. So what happens here is when we take a look at the correlation between the percentage of low-income students a district serves and per-pupil expenditures, we see that there is no correlation. So on the bottom, we see the percentage of children in the district who are eligible for free and reduced-price lunch. That's the percentage of kids who are low-income. On the other axis, we see per-pupil spending, right? The number of dollars they're spending per pupil. And what we see is that some of the highest-spending districts in the state are also some of the lowest-need districts. And then when we look at the other end of the chart, Danbury's down by there, we see that of our higher-need communities-- that of our higher need communities, they're receiving very mixed amounts of funding. There's no relationship between the need and what they're getting. And as we can see with Danbury, Danbury's one of the lowest-funded communities in the state, and it also has relatively high student need. The same thing happens a little bit more dramatically when we look at English language learners. Again, you can see that Danbury is down there with a pretty high percentage of English language learners, but not receiving per pupil funding that correlates. So we talked a little bit about the Education Cost Sharing Formula and the fact that it is underfunded, right? The fact that some cities and towns receive much less than they should, while other cities and towns receive much more than they should. One of the things that I'd like to point out, though, is we spend a lot of time focusing on the underfunding amount, right? It was sort of the rallying cry of this meeting, "Danbury is 50% underfunded." And while I think that's a very important fact, I don't think it's the only fact in the school finance conversation. I think one of the things that we need to think about is, you know, when we look at this formula and the student needs that it takes into account and how it measures community wealth, is it really doing a good job of figuring out where we should be sending our education resources or not? So I know that underfunding is a very popular topic, particularly in those communities that are very underfunded, but I hope everyone will also keep in mind the whole system and not be totally distracted by what we're about to see. So this is the communities, the top 10 communities that are the most underfunded in terms of dollars. So as you can see, Danbury is fourth on this list. They are receiving about $30 million less than they're entitled to under the Education Cost Sharing Formula, just below Waterbury, Bridgeport, and New Britain. I think the other thing to point out on this list is of all these communities, they're all Alliance District communities, except West Hartford. So nine of the 10 communities are among the highest need communities in the state. West Hartford is on this list in part because they have also seen some significant increases in student need over the last 10 years. However, some cities and towns receive much more funding than they should under the Education Cost Sharing Formula. So this is a list of the top 10 most overfunded towns by, again, dollar amount. So the town you see leading this list is my hometown, is Groton, and one of, I didn't have anything to do with this, but Groton is not a particularly wealthy community, so some people wonder why it's on the top of the list. One of the things that I talked about is we're not currently taking changes in enrollment into account, right? So the result of this is that when we have a town like Groton, Groton, as some of you may know, is home to the U.S. Naval Submarine Base. And over the last 10 years, the DOD has really pulled back the number of sailors that they're stationing there. Sailors come with families, and that means that there are fewer families living in Groton, and as a result, they have seen some significant declines in their student enrollment. But because we don't take changes in enrollment into account, and because of another rule called the Hold Harmless Rule, so the Hold Harmless Rule says that a school district can never receive less funding this year than they received last year from the state, no matter what. So it doesn't matter if you have half the number of children, it doesn't matter if, you know, you have half the amount of student need, it doesn't matter if the property value in your city and town has gone up, you can never receive less money this year than you did in the previous year. So when we combine the issue that the formula doesn't take changes in enrollment into account with Hold Harmless, we see that Groton is receiving about $4 million more than they're technically entitled to. Many of the other cities and towns on this list are also relatively wealthy. We see places like Greenwich on here, Fairfield, Ridgefield, Stowey, Tidfield, all relatively wealthy communities. So what actually determines how much funding a school or district receives, right? So the ECS formula doesn't determine it, and it's now really determined by four things. So the number one determinant of how much money Danbury Public Schools is going to receive from the state this year is how much money they received last year. So historical precedent is the number one thing that determines how much state funding a school district gets. So it doesn't matter that Danbury has any more kids, they're not using the formula, it'll be based on the amount of money they got last year. Second is the type of school that it is. So as I mentioned before, there's different funding formulas for different types of schools, where the school is located. So generally, cities in the Shep region and Hartford are treated more favorably than cities outside of the Shep region. Sorry, it's the loud talking. And then finally, political power. So communities with powerful political leaders are more likely to see funding increases than communities that don't have powerful political leaders. So let's talk a little bit about local funding. So how much do Connecticut's cities and towns contribute to public schools? So Connecticut's cities and towns contribute about $5.8 billion a year, or about 60% of total public education spending. And taxpayers in Danbury contribute almost $9,000 per pupil. So about 70% of the cost of educating every child in Danbury comes from Danbury's taxpayers. As we can see from this slide, that is much more than East Hartford, Meriden, and Waterbury's taxpayers are paying. It is a little bit less than Norwalk and Stamford's taxpayers are paying. So how do cities and towns figure out how much money they need to raise? Basically, you have the school district budget, you subtract from that any federal revenue, any state revenue, any other revenue that might be coming from another source, and what you're left with is the municipal or local contribution. Once the city or town knows what the municipal or local contribution is, they know how much taxable property they have, and then they set the mill rate, right? And that's the tax rate that everybody pays on their property. So one of the things that is important to know is that every city and town has a different amount of property available to tax. So when a city or town goes to set their budget, they add up the value of all the taxable property in the town. This is known as their grand list, and once they know how much money they need to raise, they set the mill rate. And in Connecticut, we have a very significant variety of grand list values. So at the very top, we have Greenwich, which has a grand list that's valued at almost $49 billion. That's very high. It's much, much higher than the next two on the list, Stanford and Norwalk. However, although Danbury's per pupil funding is pretty similar to Stanford and Norwalk, we don't see Norwalk, or we don't see Danbury at the top of this list, right? We see Stanford and Norwalk having the second and third largest grand lists in the state, and Hope at Danbury in a second. At the bottom of the list, we see many of those communities as the northeastern part of the state, some very small rural towns. So what does Danbury's taxable property per person look like in comparison to other cities and towns? So we see here that Danbury has about $116,000 in taxable property per person, which is more than East Hartford, Meriden, and Waterbury, but you'll see that it is significantly less than Norwalk and Stanford. So it is almost half as much as Stanford, and yet, Danbury taxpayers do not contribute half as much to their public schools. We also see that there's a significant variation in mill rates. Some of the, Hartford is a little bit of an outlier, but Waterbury, that's a real mill rate there, it's 58, all the way down to some of the wealthier communities in Ridgefield and Fairfield County, which have mill rates down around 10 or 11. And Danbury's mill rate falls in the middle among its peers, so it's currently a little bit over 28, which we can see is higher than Norwalk and Stanford. So as we noticed, Norwalk and Stamford taxpayers are contributing more money to their public schools, but they're doing it with less effort, right? So because their grand lists are so large, they're able to charge a lower tax rate and raise more money, and the result of that is that they're more easily able to raise local dollars for their public schools. So here, we calculated the amount of property tax that Connecticut residents pay, so we can see here, we have Danbury with the value of a $200,000 house. So we see that Danbury taxpayers will pay more in annual property taxes on a $200,000 house than taxpayers in Stanford or Norwalk. So I'm almost at the end here. So how can the Connecticut School Finance Project support you? Really, we can do two things. So we provide accurate, independent data and analysis to anybody that asks for it in the state. So if people need information about how schools are funded, we're happy to provide that information. And then we also spend time doing presentations like this, building knowledge about how Connecticut's public schools are funded. So if you are part of a community organization that would be interested in learning more about Danbury public school funding, we would be glad to come and talk to you about that. We've also set up a webpage for Danbury, so if you go to www.ctschoolfinance.org, you will see a lot of the resources that we had printed out at the back table that you can download. You can also download a copy of this presentation. And then if you need to contact me, my contact information is right here, and you can feel free to reach out anytime. Thank you all very much. I'm going to turn this back over to Lynn, and I think you're going to hear some words about next year's budget. Thank you. Okay, then turn this over to our superintendent, Dr. Sal Mascherano.
Thank you. We're getting the computer set up. Katie will stay here till the end and answer questions. We gave you some parts. There's a lot to absorb, right? We did have to assemble all, we had a single workshop here. So thank you for coming again. Now, I just want to know here, how many board members are here? We have none of our board members here. And we have some state reps in the Senate are here. Then we have City Council folks that are here. So, you know, we work at this together. And the thing of it is that I want you to think about, the reason why I thought this was relevant, one, every time I hear this, I get more and more angry, and I get psyched up and do something. You know, it's a broken promise to our kids for Danbury, and my job is to advocate for your kids, which are my kids, even though this is our backdrop. You know, there is a thing, there's something we can do about this. It's almost like, you know, it's so bad, why do I anger? Why go and vote? Who am I voting to make a difference? Well, there's something you can do, and as soon as it gets healthier, I'll put it up for you to look at. We spoke with Senator McLaughlin, and he made a very claim to us in terms of how we can actually maybe focus on some funding. So we're going to do that. Then we're going to talk about this budget this year, and if we ever get there. Our budget this year, or you have a blue sheet, I think, right? Would you look at this for a second? Would you look at this for a second? It's really important, because when Senator McLaughlin, he mentioned to us, he said, you know, "We don't have time." He's done him going back and forth between committees, and if you give me too much material, I will not read it. You got to really make it simple for him. I tried, I want to put this on an index card, and that's my next step, part of business card with my name on the back of it. But if you just look at, I tried to just pinpoint some of the inequities that Roy talked about, Katie talked about tonight, and I put three objectives now. To fully fund ECS line of string. Let me tell you what that means, okay? Danbury, for the past few years, has received about $7.7 million. We didn't get there all once, and we started at about 2.3, then they added more money. It was the state's attempt, Malloy's attempt, to equalize some of the funding for us. Because she mentioned the CJEF case. We're a witness to the CJEF case, I was up there, Dr. Rockwell was up there, and some of her other staff, talking about the inequities in our system. And so what the government has been doing is they've been providing money to school systems based on contingencies. And a contingency means we have to provide them with a contract. That contract has an outline of all the activities that we're going to do, that I'm going to show you, and to close, they call the achievement gap, and to provide equity and access for all of our kids. And it's worth quite a bit of money. Last year, when they approved that money, they approved an increase in it, and this year it was supposed to be close to a million dollars. That, you've been notified that will no longer be there. So one thing you can do for us, and make it very simple, is just advocate to fully fund our ECS line. We met with Representative Sharpe, who was in charge of the House, we sat there for 15 minutes, Mr. Martino and myself, and we just hammered these three things. We told our story and said, "Here's what you can do for us, okay? If we win the CJEF case, we get $30 million. You know the chances of getting that is? I'll sell you a bridge if you believe me." We're just not going to get that money, even if we win that case, but we can get this. We can get this money. The other thing you can do is fully fund the expansion of the high school. We get about 58% of reimbursement for every dollar you spend on the bond issuance. If we were to have our school fully funded, and there's Danbury, some schools, Waterbury, New Haven, Bridgeport, they get full funding up to about 90%. If we can get full funding, it means a million dollars extra for Danbury, so they can keep it to help us fund the municipal side as well as the educational side. It doesn't sound like a lot, but in our budget, as I showed you, it will mean a lot. So that's another simple thing, and it can be done. We're halfway there with the money that they give us. Special education laws. We have remarkable teachers in the district. We keep our own students here as best we can. We don't do a lot of outplacement. We try to keep our kids mainstreamed as much as possible. If they need some more restrictions, we have the resource rooms, and we have some self-containments. By doing that, we do save some money, but we also do what's right for our youngsters. But those youngsters that are placed out of the district and have to be placed in private institutions, we get money back from that. The state has decided to not fully fund that. And for Danbury itself, it means about a million dollars. So if they would give us that million, simply fund what's there that they said they're supposed to fund for our youngsters, give us the money for the high school and help this other funding, we're pretty well set for where we need to go. But those are three things. If you want to say, "What are we going to do in light of everything that Katie told me? How can I make a difference?" You can make a big difference. You can take this little cheat sheet and just look at it for a minute, and make a phone call, and advocate, make it very simple. They understand. Our legislative group here in town, they're great. There's no party lines. If it's for Danbury, they're in. No matter what it is that we need, they're helping. But you got to understand, we've tried not to be the adversarial position with the municipality, because we know that they're faced with a lot of limits as well. So we try to work at this together, and we're going through that process now. My job is to simply say to the board, "This is what we need to move forward." And is it all we need? Absolutely not. Could we use more? Absolutely can use more. But this is what we need to move forward, and we'll show you our rationale for that, because I have to look forward to City Council with this whole backdrop and say, "I need some folks, some resources, and this is why." And this is what we're going to do here now. You want to move through it? This is quick, this is, we try to have some preparatory remarks about the mission of schools, to have responsible citizens. The next thing here, the next slide, we'll talk about, this is important to us, maybe just a narrative view, but for us, the belief that, you know, that children are our first priority is what it's meant, really. When the board had to cut, they said, "Don't cut anything in the classrooms, try to keep teachers in classes." We have done that. We've reduced out, we've reduced coaches, we've reduced administrators and coordinators. We've tried to do what we can to keep that at a level where the class sizes are reasonable. No longer going to be very reasonable if things go down the path that it's going. It's, we're really challenged with this right now. But that's where the board has said, "That's how I operationalize it. If we had to cut something, we cut what we can, keep teachers in classrooms, support youngsters as best we can." Has been a high priority. And the belief that all children can learn. We keep our own youngsters here. Our percentage of outplacement or identification is about 11%. The national average is about 12.5%. Connecticut, some of urban settings, about 14, 15%. That says that the teachers are going the extra mile and keeping our youngsters in our classroom. It's very important to us, the next slide. The budget this year, and I just mentioned, we knew, the day we were up there was the Sharpe, Mark was up there, about doing his thing with his legislators, and we were going to be with some other legislators, but he had to go to another meeting. He was trying to get more funds for Danbury while we were in another office with Sharpe and trying to get more money for them. Our contingent representatives are calling us, we go up there and talk with them, and they arrange for meetings for us. So we try to do what we can, go up there, let them know, "Danbury is not happy with what we have, and there are some things you can do, and we expect you to do something. Our kids deserve..." We're a priority school, a priority school system, but the achievement gap, if you look at it, because Danbury is not succeeding, or however they want to define it, it does bring us some money. We have students that are going to some outstanding colleges, we have programs for students to become certified for all career pathways. We have youngsters that are taking multitude of advanced placement courses, we have students that are taking Duke courses with UConn and Wisconsin. There are a lot of things going on. But we also have a gap. That gap puts us in what we call a priority system, but that also enables us to get the money that we're getting. It's kind of a catch-22, in a way. We have cuts to the city, which, and we already told it, Mark and the group have nearly cut almost 6% of their money, because they're limited in terms of money they take out. So we advocate for Danbury, we advocate for the city as well as the school system. We already have been put on notice that Magnet School, our Magnet School is a magnet school that's part of the Shep settlement that we talked about, which brings towns from around Danbury. We do get reimbursed for that, for those youngsters that come. There's about 150 students that come from out of town, and we have about $2.2 million. And we have about $2.2 million. We've already been told that that's going to be frozen. Not all of them, we will not get as much money for that. So that's another impact on the budget for us. And then granted, the $7.7 million is where I was calling ECS money that the state was supposed to give us another million that they're not giving to us. The alliance money that we're using the money for, if you just think of it this way, when we were given that money, all of that money, you said, if we, first of all, they said, you got to use all the money to close the achievement gap. No, that's just not going to work. Because if we did that, you know, we have the House of Cards. We have kids that we have to move to, both sides of the continuum. So we finally convinced the state, let us use about 50% of that money before we cooperate. The other part of that money has to go to closing the achievement gap. So for us, if you look at this, this is, this happened with fully implemented kindergarten. That's why we have full day kindergarten, we were able to do that on that money over a three-year period. We have interventionist for, we have an interventionist for the schools, at the elementary and the middle schools. Class size is growing. It's hard, we have so many learners that are differentiating what they have to do to learn. We mentioned, Katie mentioned, we have students who are indigent, students that are special needs, students that are ELL, all have gaps in their learning. Capable, able students with gaps in their learning. So we have some aides that help close that gap sometimes. It's not the best. We keep saying, we put our highest, our most needed youngsters with our least qualified folks. We do do that because we can afford to do interventions. But that's part of the money we get. And we have about 25 to 35 folks that we spread through the elementary schools and the middle and high school to help. We have Psy Out training. That's just a strategy that we know, it's good instruction that helps us work with teachers in terms of how to plan better for all students, particularly ELL students. We've added some principals. We've added middle school department chairman. We've added man specialists. We've done that because if we had the operational budget, they would all be gone. So when that budget is, when the governor says, we're freezing your budget at 7.7, if you look at that, it's all huge. Based on what we call a compression factor, benefits go up, salaries go up. We have $300 million in the hole that we have to recover when he freezes us. To make up the difference, we need about $300,000, I mentioned earlier. So we're not, not only we're not getting the million, we still got to find the, the $300,000 to make that happen. It's going to come out of the operational budget. Or, or we go in here and we cut kindergarten. That'd happen. We're not going to do that. Or we have to go cut teachers. We won't do that. But we're going to have to make some cuts. There's no doubt about it, if we can't get them to restore that money. And it is important to us. The funding is projected, is projected to increase by $8.7 million next year. It was part of my annual budget. I think that's kind of, we can go to next slide. Katie covered that stuff. Our total request is what we're asking for, just to give you a sense of what we're doing, is basically $130 million or 4, 4.6% increase. Opening a new middle school. Remember, we phased it in, right? So opening up Westside Middle, we need close to $660,000 just to do that. Just to move this budget forward without doing anything, without doing anything, it's $4 million to do that and change, right? The other money there is program improvement. The hardest thing for, and I don't think, I just don't accept this premise, the hardest thing for us to do as a school system is to move forward when we don't have the resources. And always keep going back, never giving our youngsters the opportunities. We just won't do that. If you look at the high school, we put in a middle college program. If you look at the middle school, we put exploration programs. We've done computer programming at the elementary school. We've tried to move forward, not as aggressively as we want. We just can't do it. But that's our challenge. And to do that, we put in about a million dollars of improvement to do that. In air supplies and things of that nature. So that's what's picking up our requests when we go to the city council. City council is mindful of what their income phases. You know, it impacts them in terms of what they're going to get from the state. And we try to work this out together to get to the best possible resolution to a budget that we can, you know, say is going to at least get us through this next year in a way that's going to not impact some negative answers. We won't play the game with, say, in the high flights. At least, you won't hear it from me, it may happen, but it won't hear it from me. Because I think athletics and clubs and those extensions are really part of the integrated educating of our youngsters. One of our biggest problems here is that our kids do not have the experiences that other kids have. And I'll be darned if I'm going to cut more of that out. So we don't use that as a threat. If we don't have the money, we're going to go and see what's outside the classroom that we can minimize. What do we have, what can we do it up? What can we phase in? What can we reduce so we can keep class sizes reasonable and also provide our youngsters with a comprehensive program as best we can? With that, I'm going to turn it over to Joe Martino, who's our, we're going to call him the miracle man. He said, he'll find me some money. He tries to find it for me.
Evening, everybody. Funny story, Mr. Ross told me about a month ago, I need your projector in the auditorium.
Ed, the projector's fine, what are you talking about?
Blinsel. Evening, everybody. Thanks for coming out. As Dr. Sal said, we appreciate everyone coming, and our elected officials as well. I'm going to take you through at least briefly the operation budget of Danbury Board of Education. As Dr. Sal said, the current increase for next year is 5.6 million or 4.59%. Kind of get under the hood on what the pieces are to that. The key budget elements, the enrollment, enrollment growth coming for Westside? Come on. Eighth grade at Westside, our ongoing enrollment growth, ECS budget that's before us, over the 16, 17 budget, and obviously addressing our needs, our neediest children in the district. As Katie just pointed out, this is our current enrollment growth in Danbury. Peter Product, who's a demographer for the state, did a study for us. The black line right there is actually the current trend in Connecticut. And you'll see in a sense, the blue line represents Danbury on the upside, and the rest of Connecticut will be down. I believe the exact number now is about three or four districts in the state that are still growing. Danbury is one. We had over 2% this year enrollment growth, so continued ongoing growth. The current trend for going forward in the years ahead, increased growth. I can tell you, these projections are actually now about a year or two old, and they are, we are exceeding those numbers rapidly. The current high school, as you guys know, is 26 classroom addition happening in the high school. Current enrollment right there is 29, 2990. The projection is to go to 3,450 students going out. And the students are here, they're moving up. We see in our elementary numbers, you have K 1 and 2 grades that are currently at 900. Your 3, 4, and 5 grades are about 850. I mean, the kids are here. This isn't like a, you know, we think they're coming. They're definitely arriving in droves. We heard definitely shelter rock parents last night at the boarding. As Katie said, too, the dovetail, the continued increase in some of our neediest kids, our ELL population numbers and the growth there, the frame reduced, you know, well, 43% in '08 and now at 54% in 2015. Over the budget, obviously, the biggest piece to our budget is our salaries and benefits. The salary portion of the budget alone is $74 million. Encumbrancy in that is our contractual rates, our teachers, our custodians, and all of the people that make this district work. We have 6.4 FTs in for the Westside Middle School Academy and assistant principal. That will finish the 8th grade in that building and complete at 600 students. We also have inside the budget what is called program improvement, our elementary school growth. We continue to add, on average, three to five new classrooms across the city every year. So we're projecting three additional classrooms. The challenge is, we don't necessarily have the classes and put the teachers in. So we're continuing to look at space, dividing classrooms, trying to make everything fit that we can. Our middle school math and reading supports, we're looking at, hey, it's tutoring center models at our middle schools, and there's three, five FTs in the budget there. Our special education department, we're looking at additional supervisor add there based on the number of students and the number of teachers underneath that department. Sheer caseloads are just unbelievable. Additional supports at the high school, our additional counselor, ELL and science, those numbers continue to move up as we see that bubble move up into the high school grades. Speech and language, we continue to see large numbers in our preschool populations that are really growing exponentially and the caseloads on those. Also, the high school Park Avenue, additional nurse, as you know, Park Avenue, now it's 600 students. And the high school continues to grow as well, so we're looking at additional supports there. Benefits is the next largest piece of the budget that represents about $23 million, which honestly is probably the brightest place we've seen in this budget as far as cost savings. The last three years, typically inflation trend for health insurance, about 8%. Danbury's been running about 1% to 2% in growth. Three years ago, the city self-insured. And to make things simple, it's basically, we pay out medical claims as we go. We don't really fully insure like with your auto policy at home. So if a person goes to the doctor, we pay those claims out. We do have catastrophic coverage for our employees. But because of that, we've actually had a lot of cost mitigation in that area. So it's been a, what was a, you know, 10, 15% my first year here, we've seen actually really flat numbers there. So really good news on the ongoing health insurance front. Our current enrollment is 5.5% or $1.2 million. We continue to see with conversions into our plans. Our organs compensation continues to be an area of concern. Services fees, this primarily is our specialization tutors. We have a lot of one-on-one and two-on-one tutors, approximately 220 in the district. These help keep our students in Danbury and in district. Outplacements is costly, but in reality, it's better if you can keep your students in dish and service their needs here, and we generally try to do that. OTP to increase those supports as well. We do lease spaces, so one of the pieces in the budget, our early childhood center, which is Sacred Heart, we rent eight classrooms over there, and we did increase some more space there. Transportation, a big area of our budget. 2.5% increase next year for transportation. Continue increases in cost. We've added buses in the last five years. I believe we've added about 10 buses for growth, with Westside coming online, all additional needs there. We continue to see challenges in our, what is known as our BOAG program. As folks know, in a lottery system, you elect to go to what is not a lock high school. It's a ag STEM program up there. And we continue, when a student elects to go, that we have to pay tuition for them. So we've seen an increase there. I do have to digress for one second because last night at the Board of Education, we made the board approve a brand new contract with STA for a full propane fleet coming in a couple of years. So really good news there as far as cost savings and another kind of big green initiative for the board. Side note on that one. These supplies and, supplies, we continue to try to increase supplies for our kids. We ratio those supplies out, $35 per student. So as our enrollment grows, we typically try to reallocate those funds around. So that's an area, we have seen big savings in our fuel, our heating. Obviously, it's always been homework, we have seen heating and fuel prices drop. So we see about $150,000 in cost savings in that area. Also, we've done many energy projects. And last count, now, I believe the board has done energy and lighting conversions now at all 13 facilities, including Broadway, actually, this was done about three or four years ago. This example of Hayes Town School, you'll see the 2013, that's actually kilowatt usage at this school. And we did a lighting retrofit and energy retrofit there, and you'll see those numbers drop. That represents right there easily a 15,000, our savings in utilities. We've done that now in many schools with LED and exterior lighting. Equipment, the equipment lines are currently flat. We have our copier leases, our solar leases at Elsor at the Park Avenue, which has paid many dividends so far. Also, our dues and fees, which is actually a small decrease in those accounts. So in a sense, in closing, just briefly, we continue, obviously, as Dr. Sal said, we really do have a challenge here at Danbury both at state and local level. And, you know, we realize, once you read the papers, too, that what impacts the city impacts the board. And, you know, when I see things like a 5.75% cut in municipal aid, excluding ECS, all those things will impact the board as well. So, I mean, we continue to have a challenge to the city taxpayers, and I can't stress that. This isn't a, like Dr. Sal said, it's, we have to, we're all in this together on how we can fix the funding formula. We represent, are very sharply leaning with him. I mean, it's, there's a lot of concerns out there. Every area you pay about the state budget, things aren't getting better, clearly. So this is kind of like a brief overview, at least where the budget sits and kind of big moving parts to all.
Do you want to talk about the process going forward?
Yeah, process going forward, it's a good point, thanks, Michael. Process going forward, we have, the mayor, the mayor will hand out his budget address. It's April 5th at City Hall, it's the first Tuesday of the month. It then goes to a, the board budget goes to a subcommittee meeting of the city council usually about mid-April. And then the budget is then ratified in May. The challenge this year is the state budget, obviously, is not ratified until about May 20th when the short session ends. So as far as any additional cuts that can impact us, that's a concern going forward as we see a lot of our grants eroding almost in front of us. So process wise, those are really the three key dates before us. And then after that, in May, the Board of Education will make the adjustments we need to do to make essence everything to work, the magic that Dr. Sal points tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. If this, Katie is a non-political organization. We had, we had, I had to be introduced to them and their program. Okay, she said technical, then, so, so there's no mention. So I'm going to start by asking, why do I do this? The first part of this, if you have questions for Katie, just don't ask me Danbury questions regarding funding for the operational part. If you have a Danbury question regarding her presentation, that's fine, right? You're fine. But another thing about our budget, I'll take that after she's done, all right? So I know you have some cards. Did they turn the cards in? Want to bring them down? And then you can answer a few questions.
All right, Michael's going to grab up the cards, and he will answer a few. So yes, after I answer a couple of your questions, Dr. Sal and Mr. Martino will answer Danbury questions. So now I have to figure out your handwritten. So, the next question is one that I will read, but not one that I can answer off the top of my head. How does Danbury compare with Norwalk and Stanford in the following categories? Average class size, administration per student, average teacher salaries, average administrator salaries, SAT scores? That is all, a lot of it, maybe not all of it, is publicly available information. We will put that information together, and after this, we will send out a question and answer item, and we will take care of that. So if I see other questions like that in here, I'm just going to skip over them, and we will answer them by email. All right, so, how can we continue to move forward with such funding disparity in state funding? What action should be taken? So, Dr. Sal and Joe have figured out how the district will move forward with this funding disparity. That is their magic to work. But the action that can be taken, Dr. Sal talked a little bit about the types of actions that parents can take. Certainly, one of the things that we encourage all parents to do is to get involved with your local public school district. So if this is an issue that you are concerned about, get involved with your PTO, get involved with your school governance council. I think that there are going to be some additional opportunities through them to do some items around this issue. You can also, you know, if you have concerns about this and want more people to know, you certainly can write op-eds in the local newspaper and take those kinds of steps. So the second part is a state question. So how do changes begin at the state level to modify, update current practices in terms of distribution? For example, no school receiving less money from the year before, moving toward equity, et cetera. So it is the state legislature who has the authority to make changes to the way that schools are funded. We talked a little bit about the fact that this is a state-level issue, so it's state government that makes decisions about this. And ultimately, it is our state legislators who need to make changes to the school finance system. Any questions about school lunch quality? Yeah, I'm not, based on, Michael, do you have more?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Let's see what else we've got. Some of these are going to be easier to handle, and a couple of them are related to... All right, how can we convince districts that are overfunded to want to change? So certainly, this won't be a surprise to any of you. If you are receiving more funding than you are entitled to, you probably don't want to give it up. Why would you ever want to give up the money? I wouldn't want to give up any money. But, you know, more seriously, one of the things that I think we can think about when we think about some of the more affluent communities in the state is... we think about some of the more affluent communities in the state is some of them may be willing to exchange funding for things like freedom from mandates. So I think what you really have to do is come up with incentives that will make those communities more open to making changes in the system. But certainly, no one is probably going to voluntarily give up additional resources. I think the rest of these, it's probably going to be, they're pretty complicated. I think the rest of them, it's probably going to be easier for me to answer by email. I can assure you, we really do answer all of the questions. So we will put these questions together. We have all of your email addresses, and we will send out a Q and A that follows up on all of these questions.
We work on the school lunch quality every day. To, to, no, at some graduation requirements. States, we have twenty-one credits, and we have about, our graduating class, out of six hundred and fifty students, somewhere about four hundred plus have well over twenty-five. But the state legislature has decided, well, when they did an audit across the country, and they found that Connecticut has one of the lowest number of requirements for graduation requirements. So you know what they did, right? Everybody now needs twenty-five. Well, it sounds simple, but I have tons of students that need possibly four credits in a specified area, science has been one, that it could cost us between eight and fourteen FDs. That's somewhere in the vicinity of two-plus something million dollars either. State did that, we keep saying to them, are you going to reimburse us? They said, we'll take care of it when we operationalize it. So for four years, we got them to kick it forward. Now it's time, next year's seventh grade class, which will be going into eighth grade, when they leave high school, if it passes, I think it's going to have the twenty-five credits. But what does it mean for us? It's not bad for youngsters. I mean, I get that, but it's just that it's another unfunded mandate. So that's what I keep talking to them about. There's six hundred and three unfunded mandates. They just say, go do, and go do, and go do, and go do, and no cash, no cash, no. But that's the kind of thing that happens constantly. So when we go up and talk to the legislature, we try to be explicit with examples to them, so it's not just that we don't have the money. Well, then, stop line graduation requirements. A number of our kids are exceeding twenty-five. And oh, by the way, if you do that to a kid's schedule, that wants to have an externship or an internship, you'll limit the amount of time they can be off campus. Have you thought about that? Well, no. But twenty-five is good. Connecticut is below, you know, the average. I mean, that's the kind of thinking sometimes, that, you know, it's kind of simplistic. I think the heart's in the right place, don't get me wrong, but, you know, if you're going to do it, you got to get some funding. So we've got a lot of things like that, that I think we can work out there. Okay, why don't I take some operational questions from our side, if you have any? Raise your hand if not, you can be done. Yes?
I have a question. What do you want us as parents to do to support you with the budget being put forth? What exactly do you want us to do?
The question is, what do you want, what would you like the parents to do? I think that become knowledgeable of, that's why we did this, so you have a narrative and a backdrop of what we need. But I gave you that sheet, I think calling your legislators, and calling, you know, attending the meetings in the municipality and advocating for positions. I mean, folks get up and say, you know, I'll stop taxes. I get that. But somebody ought to go up and say, you know, I don't want more taxes, but I get it, you know, it's important for our kids, think about it, please, you know, and either, because it seems to be one-sided sometimes. We're working together, the municipality, but I mean, there are politicians sitting there, they need to advocate for positions. I mean, that's what they have to do. They need to listen, so, well, you need to come out and express your opinion. And if you don't support the budget, you can come out too. You have a right to do that, okay? But just get up there and know, what I wanted you to do, know, is that we are really at a crisis. This is, you know, I worried last night, how many of you shook the rock? Yeah, okay, good, thank you. I'm worried, because what I kept telling the board about three years ago, was that if this continues to spiral the way it's spiraling, I'm worried about having kind of a city school system, and we don't, we're urban suburban. My answer is that our high school at Delight, people up there, we have our issues, but here, here are people that come into our middle schools and go to our high school, it's just their respect for it, they respect the property, they really appreciate it together. Our middle schools as well, our elementarys are heavy, they're just lovely down there, they're all families, okay? We are growing to the point where we have to put more kids in classrooms. Okay, are we going to start putting twenty-eight, twenty-nine, and thirty? And if you think an eight is going to be helpful for a teacher, there are thirty kids in there, I'm sorry, mistake. So we don't want to do that. You know, we need some expansion ability, we need to make class sizes reasonable, but what's going to happen, things like that, will happen, and we need to prevent that. And we're very cognizant of that. And there's difference and disparity between schools. It's going to happen, at the elementary particularly, because of space problems. We have assist-to-school arrangement, arrangement. Some schools are at twenty-four, let's say, grade level three or third grade, another school might have twenty-seven. Parents say, wait, that's not right, but that's your catch and area. So we try to move kids over to another side of the city to do that. But now, we have nowhere else to put them. It's like the, you know, the chairs on the deck, that's not going to go on, because it's going to go down. We don't have any more room to do that. So if we get more FDs or classrooms, that's why they're on here, we can then, you know, okay, art may have to be on the wheel, but we get a classroom. Use it on the state, because we've done that before, until we figure out, maybe we need to do some other things. But if we get the faculty to do it, it can be reasonable, but our class sizes are taking some approaches like that. So that's what you can do for us, is just get up, get up and say, you know, I support the budget, I don't support the budget, I think you ought to think about supporting it, and this is why. And that sheet of paper I gave you, make a phone call to your legislature and say, I can read something to you, one, two, three. And if they get the same message, they'll get it, you know? It's about location, 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 location. They need to hear that. Any other questions? Yes?
Thank you. If you had to raise property taxes, do you have an idea of how, what it would affect each resident, did from a, you know, local standpoint? How much that would be for each household? To make up the shortage?
No, we didn't do it in the calculation.
The city would do that more than we would. I mean, it works, I just don't know how that goes.
The question?
The question's related to what, in a sense? Our current budget increase calculates to your bill rate. We, from our side, can't necessarily calculate that through, because I don't know what the city side, there could be a bond debt that's being paid off, or some things happening on that side when it comes into the calculation. So there's no simple way for me to say that, you know, that's going to be a hundred and fifty dollar bill rate increase, or whatever that, sorry, property tax increase is equivalent. So that's, we don't, that's not something we typically have calculated in the past. There's no simple way for us to do it, I think it's hard to roll them off or coming on, if Marcus or pension obligation on his side. One of the things that is coming to effect is also the hurt of municipalities, and I believe it's, next year, there's actually a municipal cap that they cannot raise property taxes more than X percent, which is three, three percent cannot go above. So that would improve the board budget and the city budget, so the total budget in the city is above three hundred million dollars. That budget can't go up by more than three percent. If not, the city's negatively impacted, and it's actually ECS money. So, again, more.
Is there, or could there be, what you're saying with this, is there a letter that can be drafted that can be given out to, you know, the emails here, if everyone has emails, and, you know, printed out, sent into the legislature, and then passed on, given to other people, maybe to other people, and they're bombarded with letters and prompts?
The answer to this is yes, but let me tell you that I, when we talked to Senator Long, his advice was that, I sent that letter campaign stuff?
He left?
Yeah, it doesn't help. They don't get to it. You know, because, you know, it's, yes, we have a letter, we can produce a letter, but what's more important, pick up the phone and call.
My question, I don't even know where I was getting what to say, so even if there was some sort of prompt, and I know it sounds generic, but, you know, you could always add your own little things, if there was some sort of prompt, and then people could pick up the phone and call.
That's good. That would be better than just taking my letter and putting sentences on it and just sending it to them. And that would could work on a kind of little four or five prompts, like this, and put the phone numbers on your names.
Then I'd be more asked.
Yeah, we could work, that could be done. That's much, what he was telling us, that's much more effective than somebody creating a form letter and putting names on it, because, you know, they just don't, you know, they're not trying to be disrespectful, they just don't look at it. But they will listen to their constituents, that they will do.
Dr. Sal?
Questions back here.
I'm sorry, just to piggyback on that question, I mean, obviously, based on the stats that we just heard, we have growing ELL populations and growing popular populations. Has the board considered, and essentially what we're talking about is lobbying, we're lobbying for more state money for our children in the state, not necessarily increasing our property taxes, but demanding that the state gives us the same money that they're giving to Greenwich. So has the board considered organizing essentially a lobbying group for us, and considering our ELL population, so lobbying Spanish and Portuguese-speaking, you know, with our Spanish and Portuguese-speaking families, as well as, you know, everyone that's here to really demand from the state the money that we deserve?
I mean, I'll answer the same. Should we create a lobbying group, different committees? Answer is yes. The city, at their last meeting, and the board did about a month ago, approved funds, we jointly hired a lobbyist, and they'll be making a selection. That person is going to work with us for the strategy you're talking about. That's going to be part of that person's role, is to, you know, organize names and groups and put the narrative together, we were just talking about things of that nature, so the answer is yes. And, you know, it's like, are you going to spend that much money doing that? Well, here's what we found. The lobbyists that are there, the day, you know, right now, all this is white noise. In about a month, when they figure out that last day or two, when they're making, that's when the lobbyists really makes a big difference. That's when they're there, that's when disinformation really comes to bear. So that's why we decided to hire a lobbyist, to see if we could get, we just got those three things that could help tremendously, stay up the city and all of us. So the answer is yes, or that's going to happen very soon. Yes?
Dr. Sal, that thirty million dollar loss, what kind of response do you get? Why would anyone not be able to, if you could answer, why can they afford this thirty million dollars, would it make any sense?
Well, Governor White and Mark Allen were the two founding groups to see that case. This, and that was about fifteen years ago, with this equity thing. And their argument right now is that, you know, Connecticut is considered a high-performing state. When I sat there with the judge about three weeks ago, and their defense attorney came up to me, he said, well, Dr. Sal, how can you tell me you need money when your elementary school is a Connecticut elementary school here? How can you tell me that you need money when you put in early college programs? How can you tell me you need more money when you double the number of students in eighteen courses? Dr. Sal, why can't you tell me that, you know, you need more money when your athletic programs are something better? Dr. Sal, why can't you tell me that you need money when there are a lot of teams in a national, national championship? They're making claims that we are doing fine. I mean, that's mental, but the evidence that Katie shows you is that, you know, in fact, it's not equitable. That's what the court cases are. When we go and talk to legislators, they get that piece, but their hands are tied up on the formula. And by the way, the formula is man-made, it could be man, you know, written up. That's what they did, they froze that formula particularly, we haven't unfroze that. We won't get to thirty million, they know that's not justifiable, but we had to go to court for that, and it's been about fifteen years that we've been in court, with about thirty other districts against them. There isn't any really rational reason.
Twenty-five hundred dollars.
Oh, I mean, if, New York State won their law, was Katie here? New York State had a similar lawsuit, they won, three years ago. They haven't seen a penny of it. They haven't seen a penny of it. So I get that, I mean, it's the right fight to do for our kids, because they think we need to be at the table if there's a settlement. I want to make sure Danbury's there as part of it. But in the interim, what we can do is what we have in front of us, call and try to just nibble around the edges, because that nibbling will help us.
Dr. Sal, what are they doing to fix the problems? They say that we have this EPS formula, we're not really using, it's frozen, but we haven't really used the formula. Are they creating something new or something equitable to use in the future, or is this just going to be what?
The question is, what are they doing to solve the problem? If they funded the formula as it was designed, we would be a lot better off, right? What they did was, they tinkered with it, and then they froze it. So if the judge finds, let's say, in our behalf, he probably will say to redo the formula as well, that would be probably part of it. But they did, actually had a subcommittee two years ago at the Secretary of State, and they recommended, you know, we have high mobility. Some of our schools are twenty-five percent of our kids move around. Our average is about twelve percent in terms of kids that move about, right? So the formula takes account for that, the formula takes account for the number of ELL students. We have some schools that are ninety percent of our kids on frequent interest lines, the average is fifty-two percent. That's part of the formula. Special, it's part of the formula, right? All of that's part of it. They froze it, they didn't use it. And they recommended to use it, the state said, you know what, we don't have the money, so we can't do it. That's what Katie said before. So they know what to do, you know, and, you know, I get these stuff, and I don't want, I don't want to go down their problem, I didn't create that. I got to advocate for our kids as best I can. Yes?
Yeah, I'm sure this is pittance, but is there, in terms of the magnet school or Abbott Tech, are we able to, and I don't know how those two schools are financially supported, but is there a way, as we're looking at per pupil costs for Stanford and Greenwich, all sorts of places, can we charge those towns that come here, like from Newtown and Brookfield and all of that?
We do.
Their per pupil cost?
Well, we don't have.
Or do we charge our?
We don't have anything to do with the vocational school acts, that's a state school.
Okay.
It's not Danbury. Those four hundred and fifty students at the high school, funded by the state. We do get a reimbursement. First of all, the AIS, the whole school, the twenty million dollar school, Danbury didn't pay anything for it, you got it for a hundred percent. So that was given to the town as part of the chef case, so for the area.
Okay.
We get reimbursement, we get three, where's the joke? We get three thousand dollars for every one of our students that attend. And then we get somewhere in the city.
Seventy-five hundred dollars?
Seven, seventy-five hundred dollars.
For each of the town in the magnet school?
For each of the town, plus we charge the surrogates.
Okay.
And they provide their own transportation.
Okay.
Right? So we do, we do do that. So we do get that money, that was that money that they've paid for us, not all of it, but a portion of it.
Okay.
Right? So they do. Our A, our middle school is an insurance act, there's no money there, there's no account there. None, those are all our kids.
Sure.
Yes, Mr. General?
One of the questions were asked, what could, what could they, somebody here do, or could a parent do?
Mr. General is our board member who is in charge of our community relations group, who's responsible for helping put this together. The two of us trying to get together is a problem.
One of the questions that I heard was asked, is what could you do to help promote this, or basically promote this? One of the things you can do is in addition to the formula problem, is every person that you know, relative or friend that you have in the district, that's a neighbor whose child goes to school, let them know what's happening. When you hear that we have eleven thousand students in the school district, this room, bust the cafeteria, should have been packed as to what we did tonight. We put a lot of effort into this tonight, it's the second year we've done this, and there is just no response. This is a poor, for my concern, a poor representation relative to the proportion of students we have. Secondly, the other thing is, the board has been working for two years on this particular issue. We had a meeting last week, it was on the Rockland, it's basically made up of the co-issue of community people in order to help us spearhead this project. This is not going to go away this year, it's not going to go away next year, but what we need, and we're going to take the lead now that the council has approved the hiring of lobbyists, we're waiting for that person to come on board and to give us correction as to what we can do. So we did have an organization set in place, learned a place for result of that meeting, but basically, we showed bullet points as to what the goals are and what we can do for tonight. We did learn, as Sal said, don't inundate the legislators with documents, so there's a lot of strategy. We plan to go up to Hartford, not in busloads, but to meet with them privately, as Joe, excuse me, and Dr. Sal had done. So there's a lot of things on the horizon that we're going to do, but it's not going to go away. When you look at four million dollars to open the school this year, just assume, early in fact, in the next three years, what's going to happen. So it's a very, very challenging and difficult time, and we've got to get the message out to the parents in this community. So it's a very, very challenging and difficult time, and we've got to get the message out to the parents in this community that our residents can join together to see if they have a solution. We cannot go to City Hall and say raise taxes. That's impossible.
But I have a question to that point if I can. My question is to challenge Danbury and our Board of Ed is, again, with our two large, biggest populations, ELL and our poverty populations, are we considering, how are we engaging those families? My kids go to Morris Street School, majority Spanish speaking. School amazing. You go to that school for any community event, that school is packed with families that care about their kids. So I challenge the district, how can we engage the families at my kid's school to make sure they're here? Because they love their kids just as much as I do. That's number one. Number two is, a high rate of poverty. Are we considering providing transportation for families to be able to get to events like this, so that their voices can be heard? What I'm, what I challenge the district to do is how can we empower our families to be here tonight to fight for their kids like we all are?
The answer to your question is yes. We are engaged in trying to make an outreach. What we're looking to do is to take this message to the local communities, to the churches, of the different ethnic groups, make presentations there, not necessarily in understanding that not everybody has a car, not everybody can come here and go to Beaverbrook. So to say, we're taking a show on the road. I'm doing this in coordination with some people and having translators with me. So the presentation you saw tonight relative to what Katie did will be summarized in addition to the school budget, and we're going to take it around town to all of the ethnic groups so that they could feel more engaged.
Sure.
And we're doing that by basically an invitation, not that I had knocked on the door, because I don't know many of the people in these locations. So it's through other people that I know, getting me invited in and my team to make this inroad. You know, we are doing it, and we're trying, everything we're doing, we're trying to do in these terms of three languages, English, Portuguese.
Saying thank you, I think reaching out is important. Very loud, I think you can hear me. However, I think what you said, just to offer a new perspective, rather than what is just the city of Danbury doing, because we're hearing a lot on what they are doing and what they're reaching out. I guess my point here today is, what can I do? And what you just said was so key to my hearing, is that I can rally at my child's school with the parents I see at my child's-
Absolutely.
-music program and grab the ear. And I can share the information for those who weren't able to come out tonight. And I think that's where our PTA's might have the strongest, or excuse me, PTO's might have the strongest impact, is educating our own community members who we see picking up our students alongside of one another each and every day. So it's really what are we going to rally to do?
That, two things. One, we have a very active group of high school students, and they are planning this thing. And if they face this, they murder shit. That'll start that one. The bus thing never works. I've tried buses herself to send around the city and people get on, so, you know, I always got to get two, but that's only two of us. It didn't work for all of the others, so if you want to guess.
I just want to piggyback on what she said. I think, I mean, we're here tonight. I mean, I'm a parent, I'm an educator, I'm on the PTO, but I'll, I'll admit, until a month ago, I was pretty ignorant about what was going on. So if I was, I know there were a lot of other people. Since we are here tonight, we need to get out. And like Dr. South said, not only be angry, but go out and make everybody listen. I'm telling everybody, I'm very disappointed because all the people I tried to get here to come tonight did not show up, but I'm not going to stop trying. So if we could somehow, or, you know, I mean, come on, we know the, you know, the, all analogies and everything. If we could get two people to come next time, this room would be full. And then let's force the kids to, you know, force the meetings to bigger venues. But what we have to do is walk out of here angry, but determined to get somebody else to come here. That's what we need to do. And we're in this together. We all know this, Dr. South. I want to thank you for putting this together. It was, it was great. It was very informative. But we can't just walk out of here just angry. We have to walk out of here determined to get other people to come back.
Thank you, you all, for doing this, the city. I appreciate it. Question back here.
It's not really a question, just to piggyback on what you said, I think the importance of going to your school PT, maybe going to the school's PTO as a representative and doing this presentation in a mini-form to the parents who are already going to be there. And if that list is going to be put together, those answers to those questions and sort of cheat sheet of how to engage our legislator, then we could actually hand, I think the biggest thing is coming out to a meeting and feeling like, what do I do next? So if we could bring it, each one, bring it to your school, and here's what you can do. It's a lot, you get people more involved if you help them know what they can do to potentially solve the problem as opposed to just being like, pardon me, expression.
By the way, there's something on TV, and the titles were in Spanish as well. So if we can edit it, maybe use it as more of that.
I'll be right here.
I have two questions. One is actually a claim to be back on that. The biggest concern of parents not coming is childcare. Everybody's talked about buses and not being able to be here. It's childcare. Open up ten rooms in this building and have teachers or high school students come, you'll get more attention. That's one of the points. But my other point, just my question a while ago, goes back to Magnet School. You said that seventy-five hundred dollars per student for out of district that we get, so from the state. So what do we get from those towns? Because in my mind, that's like the sovereign loss.
Seven, seventeen hundred eighty-four dollars.
Seventeen hundred eighty-four dollars. So that doesn't cover the ten thousand plus dollars per student that we need to educate our kids, and we're educating our district kids.
Yeah, it was sixty, sixty percent, Danbury.
Yes, 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 yes. The question is, if you take the seventy-five hundred dollars and the three thousand, that's ten five and a thousand. We're getting cost, or twelve thousand. But I think we had, it was a very good cost of what we were doing when we put this together. And that was to expose the decision on towns' grounds, diversity of our town and values and the mosaic of our town.
But that school's not diverse.
No, but it's, we didn't have diversity of our numbers. It's refiling our numbers. And if it wasn't, we'd have to face a lot of challenges. But that was the purpose. That was the purpose of it.
But that's not, that's not what's coming out of it. It is the purpose, but that purpose is not being fulfilled.
Well, that's the purpose of it. It's an open free lobbying that people can get in. We're not allowed to have lobbying by a circle or body ever have. That's easy. That won't happen. I can't do that. But the better question is, you know, why do you charge them more money? The trouble is, is voluntary. It's not the chef case, which is up in our, if you don't, if a kid comes, you know, I go and demand money. They don't have to pay any of that today. This is all voluntary. We have five towns that volunteered to participate. Newtown, the coast, and Longland's gone down, they dropped their money. Some of them are more market sent. So there's no mandate, so they're putting kids in, ones at the school, to the primary offices, and they're putting them in.
But we put money into that school even out of our budget.
Yes.
We were educating children from other-
Yes, but we also got a free school for twenty million dollars. You know, I mean, I can see this side, but you know, if they just run a foster parent, it's not, I don't live there. But it's nice to have some special regulatory offices that can say, that's, it is, you know, glad they have a Magnet School. But we do subsidize some of it. But we do have, we do have a municipal, I mean, not mention, the town that paid for it. That's all. Here and here.
All right, I'm, this kind of, I don't know, it's been on my mind all night. I'm wondering, I don't know how it worked really, but I'm wondering what the relationship is that you're working with, city of Danbury, right, very closely, between like, this is not something that we solve immediately, right? So I'm just wondering about like building codes. I mean, all these kids are already in the school system, right? And we know we're running out of space and money, big time. So if we keep building a lot, like, we're not even putting those kids into these schools that don't exist in class, we're using the budget, you know, that we're, that's platinum. So I'm just wondering, is there any relationship, if it's been discussed, or, I don't know.
It's one of those, we do have a relationship with the building community, and where they come to bear is that if we have to put something on wheels or we have to move the space, they can make sure the space is secure. They've been good for that. I'll say right now, probably we're considering modules. The city's been in favor of it. We just put eighteen classrooms on about three years ago, and we're going to put in modules at some of the clinics. So that involves the city come in and give us permission to do that, utilities and all of that to the Department of Commerce.
I didn't think of school building. I meant new homes, new families, more kids.
Oh, oh, well, we're like, and all it's been, well, yeah, you know, you have the downtown project, the Kennedy project that's coming on right now. And you have Farmington, is it Farmington? Up on, by exit one. Yes, Rivethood, thank you, up there. We're getting kids out of there. We're getting kids out of there. Well, that's why we're growing two and a half percent a year, you know. The other thing that's happened here, people are selling their homes that have been in it for a while, and they're being back for the families. And some of them staying and going to condos or aren't condos. That's what's happening. That's what's happening with the city of Charlotte in particular. We're going to wrap this thing up here, so, yes.
Yes, I'm going to be heard, thank you. Okay, so my question is, the three elementary teachers for the program improvements. So anticipating that those were to be hired and that was to be passed, where would those, what is your idea as far as where you would place those three elementary school teachers? Because I'm very curious. I have a daughter at Mill Ridge, and she's in kindergarten class of twenty-three students, no age. And when I talk to, I'm a teacher in Brookfield, and I'm a reading specialist, and I just, I talk to other teachers in my district and in surrounding districts that I'm friends with, and people just gasp. Twenty-three and no eight, that just seems like unbelievable, and it doesn't seem right. So I'm very concerned, and I see five teachers to be hired or on the, in the budget proposal for the middle school, and that I'm wondering why five there, and wouldn't you want to put your teachers in the elementary schools to avoid reading deficits because it's an uphill battle from there? And you'd want to get a hold of them in the younger years? It doesn't make sense to me to, you know, put them in the middle school. You've got to get them in the formative years and really get a hold of those reading issues then to avoid legal problems. So I'm not really clear. I think some answers as far as, where are those teachers going?
The foundational schools, Katie, I have no doubt about that. We have goals for our numbers. But those numbers there, kids are moving up the slide. And those three FTEs will be given to the school, to the schools where their numbers are exceeding. They're going from three, let's say, three of grade two to, or four from grade two to a grade that they have, they need another teacher. So we just anticipate putting them in there. What the board has been good about doing is, these are anticipated. We don't know where they're going, but we think we know. One year we have four teachers, three teachers scheduled for one place. The kids didn't show up there, they showed up at another place. We just broke down the classes, we set them there. So right now, we have some that, these are just progression numbers. We know we need three FTEs definitely across the district because of the high numbers in grade order before when they move up. That's one thing. Whether it's, I don't think that's, I don't think, answer specifically, there's no, there isn't anyone scheduled for Mill Ridge. I can be specific, unless it's something else, we don't know.
So the class sizes are going to continue to increase as they're enrolling, and so it's going to get higher than before.
Right, as I said before, you know, what happens is, you're making all these hard choices that you don't want to necessarily make. And we have a million dollars of improvement. We have class sizes and natural progressions because of numbers. Then we have programs that we want to enhance or expand, or expand for instances that are part of that process. That may not get funded, and we may have to take the FTEs that you saw at the middle and say, okay, that's got to go down here, because that's the highest part of the board set, teachers in front of kids as best we can. So that's the drive, what we do. So there may be someone down there. I mean, our goal is to keep those under twenty-one, eighteen to twenty-one, but they've been creeping up, creeping up, creeping up. There used to be ages in kindergarten, and we had some years that we couldn't afford to do it, the ages were taken out. I mean, it's just, it's just, I guess what I'm saying, that's the kind of decisions that we're, and it's hard for us to do that. Nobody wants to do that. But at some point, you know, you have a comprehensive high school with three thousand kids from the thirty-five hundred with increased graduation requirements, automatically is going to give me eight to fourteen FTEs of elementary classes running one to twenty-five, twenty-six, because I can put them in one class with one teacher all day. Where's the equity? You know, I mean, it's really hard to do. It's hard to patience, say that's what we have to do, because that's what we have to do. You know, it's not what we want to necessarily. Yes.
And maybe we as parents, knowing these short-term shortfalls, should step in and volunteer in the kindergarten. I don't know.
They won't let us in the classroom.
I have a fifth grader, because I volunteer.
Well, they won't let us at our school.
Every week I volunteer to help read in kindergarten classes.
All right, there are lots of people that come in and read, you know that.
If there's a short-term need and we can help, we have to just do our best to find out.
The problem is, I am kindergarten teacher in the district, and the parents in the district. And the problem is that, as much as we would love to have parents committed volunteer, they are not teachers. And we need, what we need to put in front of these little guys is, is people who are instructing them in a way that they can-
But if you're not getting it, you've got to have something.
I'm all for having volunteers. I'm not saying, I'm saying-
You've got to have something if you're not getting it.
It is a start. It is a start. But what I'm saying is, we really need smaller class sizes that use younger grade level. My child is a kindergartner with twenty-three kids in her classes. I am a kindergarten teacher with twenty-three kindergartners in my class. I understand.
My kid was the same. They had twenty to twenty-five kids in the class even back then. So it's not changing. My kid's ten, so that's five years ago. So if it's not changing, you either have to put a request into the school board, which I don't think that's happening, because you just said that when they flipped the full-time kindergarten, I think that they're not doing ages.
Well, it's a matter of priorities. I mean, giving full-time teachers in the classrooms. More hands are helpful, but, you know, we have to make a choice before they kindergarten. The teachers have certified, or you have, you know. It's a matter of, you know, it's a hiker scale. What's going to do the least amount of damage? You don't want to build budgets that way. But unfortunately, that's what happens. I'm going to take two more questions. I'm going to throw this one back here.
I have another question. I understand that a lot of the parents, they come out tonight, but what if you take like each school district? And you guys say, you know, we're worried about the budget and, you know, raising money for our kids. But like, what if we like send letters home with the student, you know, each student? Or if they have suddenly just sent one letter home to, you know, the parents and make it mandatory? Because I know some schools in New York State, when they have budget meetings, they make it mandatory, so the parents have to come to the budget meeting to figure out ways to raise money for the school for our kids.
It's hard for me to make that mandatory for families. The other thing is, we want to be very mindful not using kids in this effort. The kids I was talking about, the high schools that are part of a city class that they're in. I know the principals at the buildings have sections, sessions for parents, the PTO sponsors, but for us to require them to do it, I wouldn't have any, any ability to do that. I couldn't do that. One last question, Selena.
Dr. South, I just wanted to point out that the student population in surrounding communities is going down, and some of the ECS, the formula, stays right up, so they're actually getting increases per child. And that's why they'll see those class sizes as reducing.
Well, that was the point Katie was making. When they froze it, they got the same amount of money. We got the same amount of money with more kids.
We looked at leasing their schools.
Right. One more. Can I get one more?
I'll just, I have a very simple silly question. Are you telling us that the state legislature represented our area, you don't get it? That was, you have to be telling us.
Let's end the night with something here.
Do you want to say it, right?
Go ahead.
My question is that we are talking about hand-pacting the state legislature. This is not a new problem from fifteen years ago, up till now. Why are we still asking about reapproaching the state legislature to do something? They don't already know for the last fifteen years already? That is my question.
Just thank you. And that's why, that's why we're in the court case, and as part of the C.J. case, to try and get their attention in the courts. And that's why, that's why we're in the court case, uh, as part of the CTE case, to try and get their attention in the courts.
So I don't, I don't get it, is that if I'm going to call in on something, tell them something already now for fifteen years, if they have not done something for fifteen years? I don't have time to take that, but why are they still here?
Well, on that note, both once and often. Thank you all for coming.